Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Piana. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Galloway, Martin, Piana, Lennon, Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. We have two presentations this evening. The first one is a presentation on Poppy Week. Frank Flores is here like he is every year. And I have a proclamation that we also do every year. So Frank, I'll start by reading the proclamation and then I will let you add what you are going to add. How's that? All right. So, "The week of May 13th to the 18th, 2013 will have special national significance because of its designation as National Poppy Week, a period when the emphasis is on raising funds for a broad project of unquestionable merit. And Americans enthusiastically support this annual tribute to their war dead which provides funds for the rehabilitation and increased comfort of those deserving disabled veterans of all wars. And the sale of this flower of remembrance again will be handled by the American Legion and the VFW veterans with its auxiliary units. Now therefore, I, David W. Coulter, Mayor of the City of Ferndale officially declare and proclaim the week of May 13th through the 18th, 2013 as Poppy Week in the City of Ferndale and urge all citizens to support the sale which has great significance for the living victims of the wars." Frank, how did you?
Thank you, Mayor, and Council. Well, every year I'm up here, not only here to start with, but as you know, on Thursday, this coming Thursday, I'll be out on Nine Mile Woodward. Thank God the barrels are way down there. Otherwise, I'd be stuck in all this menagerie. But I just have a little say here. Each year around Memorial Day, veterans of the foreign wars, American Legion, and the auxiliary volunteers distribute millions of these red poppies in exchange for contributions to assist disabled and hospitalized veterans. The program provides multiple benefits to the veterans and to the community and to the hospitalization of the veterans who make these flowers. These are handmade, as you see when they're purchased. Donations are used exclusively to assist and support veterans and their families. The poppies also remind the community of our sacrifice, our continued needs of our veterans. Finally, the poppy has become a symbol of our nationally known and recognized symbol of sacrifice and is warranted honor the men and women who served and died for our country in honor. So it's my honor to start the Poppy Week by getting your donations, as usual. I may not see you out on the street, but I'll pick you now, so.
I know you will.
And I'll present it to the [inaudible].
Thank you, Frank. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. And I'll present you this as well, so thanks for your work. All right.
Thank you, Frank. How are you doing? Yeah, thanks, buddy.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is the Blues Festival Awards and Proceeds. And we have some folks here to give away money, which is always a fun night at council.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Cheryl Lennon, and thanks to all the council. As you know, the past 14 years, committee has put on in Ferndale the annual Ferndale Blues Festival. And this year in particular, we broke all records. The festival this year was held in 27 venues in three cities. More than 75 concerts were held over 14 days using 50 volunteers. Our gross donations this year totaled more than $27,000. After expenses, we have raised for the charities $23,000. That broke all the records, and we're very, very pleased with that. The club that raised the most money, as it has every year for the past 14 years, was Dino's. Dino's is not able to, Dean Bach was not able to be here tonight, but he himself is giving a couple of awards away. And Monica, maybe you would demonstrate one of the awards. This is going to Mindy Schwartz, and she was one of two people that worked with Dino and the barbecue, along with Anna Amato and Ed Tech, which is, they are also winning one of these guitars. I thought I might ask Councilman Lennon if he wanted to play a short riff.
Every good boy deserves a favor, isn't it? He didn't think I knew that, did you?
You could probably do it.
You didn't think I knew that.
But we'd all be singing the blues, I'm sure. So this is going to Mindy Schwartz. We have another guitar going, as I said, to Anna Amato and Ed Tech. Dino's himself through the barbecue and his portion of Blues Festival raised $14,000 of that total. So we, as we said, we, a lot of volunteers put this on. When we put this on four months ago, you know, it was very, very cold outside, kind of like tonight. But we also present every year what is known as the Coveted Blue Pig Award. And the Coveted Blue Pig Award is presented to a club bar venue that goes above and beyond the Call of Duty. And this year, the award is for best new venue and best music. And the award goes to One-Eyed Betties, Beth Hasi Kamana. Beth's a little bit shy. She's already said she doesn't want to speak, but you all know where One-Eyed Betties is on Troy. You know, we made it to match the logo, but One-Eyed Betties really stepped up to the plate. They raised nearly $2,000 just at that one venue. They had the best music, for sure, and there was music, as we know, all across the cities. But we appreciate a brand-new club like this stepping up to the plate. The only reason, and the only way that we're able to raise all the funds and put on all these concerts is because of volunteers and business owners like Beth Hasi. We do this to bring music and culture to the town in an otherwise cold, wintery environment. We do it for the businesses, to bring business to downtown Ferndale and the other cities. We do it to get people out and be able to mingle and see each other in the winter, and of course, we do it to raise money for charities. Monica?
And above all, I want to thank all the volunteers. We've had volunteers that have worked on this event for 14 years that Craig and I have been organizing it with Sherry, my husband, our husband, my husband. And there are so many volunteers, I could never mention all their names, but Beth had another good idea. She rangled the Detroit Derby Girls to help her raise money in her venue. And they have the cutest names, so I have to read those off. Diesel Doll and Matador, Day of the Dead, Rock'em Sock'em, Anomaly, Loca Lola, Devil Kitty, Wham Tramack, Cinderella, One-Eyed, no, that's not One-Eyed Betties, Eight Mile Rose, USS Denture Prize, Crook and Reekin, Crackin' Whips, Cookie Rumble, Suffer and Suck a Bash, Kareen the Dream, Tess Tackler, and Vegan with Avengeance. And it was the Derby Girls that raised most of the money there. We did also have a couple of little help out there, and that was Francine Hackem, Deborah and David Young. But other than that, so that was a fun day. So I think that from now on, all of our volunteers should have volunteer names.
So again, Council and Mayor, thank you for letting us do this. It's all about the community, and the next big event coming up is Pride. You'll hear about that later, but thank you for giving us your few minutes.
Thank you. Next item of business would be call to audience. Call to audience is 30 minutes, up to 30 minutes now, more time needed at the end of the meeting. For anyone in the audience to come up and speak on any subject that's not on the agenda, because you'd get an opportunity to speak on that when we get to that portion of the agenda. You get three minutes, say your name, your address, and your three minutes worth. And Frank?
Good evening, Mayor. Frank Flores again. I'm representing the American Legion also. I want to give you a big thank you, Mayor, and Councilman Lennon. As you know, on April 27th of this past month, we had a memorial sponsored by the Berkeley American Legion. I believe you may have said something of it in the last council meeting. I wasn't here, but I was putting this together to bring, to send it to you, to thank you for representing the City of Ferndale and myself. A lot of people I asked about Matthew Leach, and they asked, why didn't we do this? Now, as you know, the American Legion, myself, we not folded, but we moved along with other legions. And I worked hand-to-hand with the Berkeley American Legion to recognize the Ferndale resident. Now, we probably may have done the same thing if the Legion was still alive for a Berkeley veteran. And all veterans are veterans, you know. And then, again, they have a memorial set up for him, and I believe there was a flyer of this type up there. I don't know if there's any more left, but I'd like to present one more to the city clerk so she can make more copies to help. Now, if anybody's seen this memorial, it's beautiful. And the ceremonies that was done, I wish there was a videotape set up. He'll be recognized at the Memorial Day Parade, I believe, as one of the Michigan Fallen at the end, from my understanding. And hopefully, people can understand what our veterans are doing throughout the country. You know, the war may subside a little bit, but we still lose a few here and there. We opened the invitation to everybody, not only in the city, but in the area, to come out and see this beautiful memorial. It's something I've never seen before. Now, not of this caliber, the battle cross that they put up together. Now, there is one out in Waterford for one of the servicemen's that we lost, same thing, but not the way it was put in that granite. And the unique thing about this is there's a little bit, there's a bench put in front of it, and on it it says Jack's Bench. And Jack's Bench is for Matthew's son, where he sits there and looks at that memorial. And we have a lot of people that do the same thing. Things like this throughout the country is coming all about. Memorials are coming out left and right. My understanding, we're going to put ours up, put together, and hopefully. So again, Mayor, and Councilman, and I believe the rest that had other activities, thank you again for representing the city. And if there's anything I can do to help out with veterans here, I could be easily contacted. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you, Frank.
Sherry Wells, 315 West Troy. On Clean the F Up, my crews tried a little something additional this time. We had plastic grocery bags that we leafed over in our, to put the recyclables and returnables in that little bag. And then on the way to our assignment, I stopped by and picked up my yard waste trash can, and Jim Piana stopped by his house to get a yard waste bag. And with very little extra effort, we were able to put the weeds and stuff in the bag instead of in the trash. So I think they'd be a good thing for next year. Now, other things to not go into the trash, the recreation department at the Coolak Community Center could use for its summer program, I think I need an assistant, CDs. I can still clear out all those ones I got from AOL how many years ago, and milk jugs, coffee cans, I don't know what size, and Jill here, and baby food jars, but I haven't had any of those in a long time. Also, yeah, so, there's a list for visual people. Also, at the Coolak Community Center will be a program called Recycling Made Easier. The Ferndale Seniors Group is having that. It's Thursday, May 22 at 11:00 a.m. To be a senior, it's 55 and older, but I'm sure that you can come in and take a look at that and see what you've got to look forward to when you're 55. And then, also, through the rec department and the seniors, to get rid of some stuff and putting it in the trash, again, is the trunk and treasure sale Saturday, June 8th from 9:00 to 3:00, set up is at 8:00 o'clock. And it's only $15 for a table. That gives you parking space, and then you can get rid of some of your stuff. And if you don't want to go through that hassle, Ann.
What a transition. How was that? A new three minutes, restart the clock, yes. But you have to tell us your name, not that anyone doesn't know you.
Ann Haller, 1024 Leroy, speaking today, not as resident, but as board president of Ferndale. On the same day, the Coolak Center is having trunk and treasure, we are also doing our garage sale, so that people can start at one end of Nine Mile and just walk over to the east side, over to the other end to us. And with the same time, 9:00 to 3:00, 8:00 to 4:00, whatever, whenever people get there and come back. And same thing, it's a good place for everybody to clean out. This is spring cleaning weather, except when it's almost freezing, it's spring cleaning weather. And for us, you don't rent a table, but you drop things off at the clinic. This will be posted on the website and on Facebook. It's already been on Facebook once. On Wednesday, June 5, from 2:00 to 6:00, and Thursday and Friday, June 6 and 7, from 9:00 to 7:00 at the clinic.
Is when you can drop things off?
Where you can drop things off, at the clinic. Come to the clinic, and somebody will be there Wednesday and Thursday and Friday before the garage sale. So please, if you would do that, that would help. It's, once again, a little more money to keep work in that clinic. And then I just have to say, from that, because this is a nice example of us working together with another group and getting people to exercise, walking up and down Nine Mile, I also have to say to all of you, thank you. We had a spectacular dinner, May 2. We made a very nice amount of money from the dinner. It was the most we made at any dinner. So I have to say, I have to say thank you to the sponsors, of course, all of whom are on the website and have been on Facebook, are currently on Facebook right now. We have to say thank you. Thank you, of course, to everybody who donated, the magnificent auction donors, those wonderful, wonderful people that did that, donated those things. That was very, very kind of them to do that. And of course, Linda Baker and her magnificent team for pulling it all together. And of course, all of you, thank you.
It was a great event.
Thank you so much for the support. Thank you.
Thank you. Really nice event. Anyone else from Council, from, oh, Christina.
Where's your cowboy hat? I was gonna wear it, but then I was like, oh, people are gonna look at me funny. I have two things, but we'll start off with How the West Was Won. We did start construction today. As you'll see, all the barrels are out there on the streets. And we have, note, remind people, no parking on Nine Mile from Allen to Pinecrest. And the road has been narrowed down to two lanes. It is a little tight, so please be careful going through there, be careful when you're pulling out of driveways as well. I have noticed a few times, a couple of people have kind of taken it a little wide and then realized that they were taking it way too wide. And I know, I was out there walking around, just kind of looking at the overall layout, just trying to get a feel, because they really haven't started digging in. But tomorrow, they will actually start saw cutting, removing pavement, and removing sidewalk. And they'll be moving from Pinecrest to Clanavon, so just know that that's how the construction crews are going to be moving along. Lights are out, they were out last week, so we have been encouraging businesses to be out there, putting up lights, installing some more additional lighting to their businesses, and we'll continue to encourage that as we go. Overall, just for residents to know, is that Bowfield, Cutton, and Dover are closed through traffic at Nine Mile, so please use alternate routes to your homes. There is a one-way alley access behind the businesses within those three blocks, and it will allow you to get through and then back out onto Nine Mile as you access to all those parking lots. Other than that, they will probably start actually working on water main construction items, probably by the end of this week, if not by Monday itself, so.
Well, we decided to try to do this jointly so we didn't, you know, appear too redundant. Christina's covered most of the issues that we needed to talk about, but as you have probably seen, the traffic control measures are in place. Crews were out working to optimize the signal, particularly at Livernoise, to adjust the red and green time for traffic so that it flows through there as best as possible. We also, as any project this size, you know, when we're out in the field, everything looks good on paper, and then when you get out in the field, you find out what is actually out there. And we've come across our issues of banning gas lines, dismarked water lines already, and other issues that the prince didn't identify. But, you know, we're trying to stay ahead of the contractor so that there's no delays, and we've managed to do that thus far. So Reggie Brown from Detroit Edison, if you're watching, thank you very much. He got the lights down in time, so there wasn't a delay initially. They had said that it might be as late as the beginning of June, and so they were able to reschedule some crews and get them here to remove them in time. So a big thank you to Reggie Brown. And, you know, we're going to be working on a day-to-day basis out there during construction, so if we see problems, you know, we're going to be out there trying to make it as less painful as possible on the residents, business owners. Gipps was out today going door-to-door, reminding business owners of what they should expect. There will be some removal, you know, starting tomorrow, and later on this week, as Christina said, we'll be installing the water main. Now, the installation of the water main will not require an interruption of service unless, you know, there's a break in the line while they're installing it. Later on in the project, they will, once the water main passes its bacteriological pressure test, there'll be the water lines themselves for each individual business will be switched to the new water main. And so that'll be later on, and we'll try to give as much notice as possible. So that's it. We'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
And just sort of remind everyone that they can follow the construction updates on our website at downtownferndale.com or on Facebook at How the West Was Won, as well as we're still posting on downtownferndale.com to try to get more and more people to go over to the How the West Was Won site. And you'll see Twitter feeds as well, too. So you can also contact us if there is a question or concern at 248-546-1632. And feel free that if, by chance, if somebody is not in the office or if it's late at night, when normally no one is in the office, please leave a message, and the extension number is 400 for that extension.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Very good.
And I have one last item. So here's my little sign. For our Wheels and Wine for this Thursday, it's our third Thursday event. We are doing a wine tasting and a bike ride. We're starting with the bike ride first.
Yeah.
So we'll be starting at 6:00 o'clock at the Downtown Ferndale Bike Shop, going out for a ride. We're actually going to take people out and show them around to some of the art sculptures and around town. And then back to Winezilla, where we have a tag team with Winezilla to provide a wine tasting and raise some funds for art. It's $20 a ticket and goes until 9:00 p.m., so we encourage everybody to come out and join us. You can purchase tickets ahead of time at the DDA office or at Winezilla. Limited, I shouldn't say seating, but limited tickets available, so we do encourage people to try to get out there and get their tickets ahead of time if possible. And other than that, you can go to downtownferndale.com.
Very good. Thank you.
Sherry Wells again, and speaking of bicycles, this coming Saturday is the annual Bike Rodeo. This is something that the Department of Recreation puts on. It will be at the high school from 10:00 until 3:00, I think 10:00 until 2:00 or 3:00. Kids can bring, need to bring their bicycles, and the police department will register the bicycles. The bicycles will be checked over. We have Ferndale Bike Shop, or Continental, or sometimes both of them are out there to help do that. And the kids, after they get their free helmet, courtesy of the Ferndale Rotary Club, and I get the privilege of fitting most of those heads, then they can do a little rodeo around the little orange things. And if you know of anyone, anyone here out there, parents, grandparents, anyone on the block, a kid you see that doesn't have a helmet, let them know that they can get a free helmet, and we can protect those little brains.
Good evening. Greg Palica. Got my Ferndale Community Foundation hat on. Just want to remind all the nonprofits that the foundation is still accepting grant requests. You can pick up the application on our website, and if you have any questions, you can contact myself or Dan Martin. You can contact us through info@ferndalecommunityfoundation.org, and applications can be dropped off here at City Hall. And the other part is Ferndale Pride is coming up rather quickly on Saturday, June 1st, from noon to 9:00 o'clock. We have only a couple of spaces for vendors left. And so, again, you can go to www.ferndalepride.com and pull down a vendor application. We are still looking for volunteers. We need greeters, we need people to help us set up tents, we need people to help us take down tents, tables and chairs. I think security still needs some people. There's always something to do, and if you have any questions, again, visit us at our website or contact myself, Greg Palica. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Chris Prakowski, 234 West Maplehurst.
Phyllis Ferris, 560 La Prairie.
We're representative of Michigan Fallen Foot Float, walks in Memorial Day Parade. We carry posters for the soldiers that have fallen. We need about 250 to 300 volunteers to pull this off. This year is a little special because of Matthew Leach, one of Ferndale's soldiers. We're honoring him, and we hope that all of Ferndale would come out and pay the respects for the families and the soldiers who passed. The parade starts at Maplehurst and Livernoise. Volunteers can show up about 8:30 to 9:30. Parade starts at 10:00. To contact us, you can look at www.michiganfallandfootfloat.com or www.facebook.com/michiganfallandfootfloat.
Excellent. Thank you.
I love seeing flyers on the back and our cards, too.
I appreciate it. Thanks for your work. Anyone else like to address council this evening?
Oh, Your Honor, it was in the back, something Googoo in the back. I remember I wasn't paying attention. I would like, first off, to thank the community that came out, that supported the football team, baseball team, and soccer team at the drive event over the weekend. Raised a lot of money for those three sports teams. It was a very good event. And I also like to invite everybody here Wednesday morning at 10:00 o'clock to the Ferndale Police Memorial Flag Raising Ceremony. It's very short, but we just honor the officers this week themselves for what they do, and on Wednesday, the 15th, we specifically honor the officers that have fallen on line of duty over the past year. So just an open invitation for anybody who would like to attend. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Anyone else for call to audience this evening? All right. If not, we'll move on in the agenda to the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are items that we council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless something is removed from the consent agenda. Let me take a second to read those. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held April 29, 2013. B is the adoption of a resolution proclaiming June 2013 as scleroderma foundation awareness month. Item C is the adoption of ordinance number 1141, amending Chapter 6, Article 2, to adopt the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code and to repeal the National Maintenance Code of 2000 of the Ferndale Code of Ordinances. And finally, D, approval of the bills and payrolls as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review of the council finance committee. What's council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I would move that we adopt the consent agenda in its entirety.
I support.
By Galloway, supported by Piana. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda this evening? Madam Clerk, could you call a roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda, item A is the consideration of amended parking enforcement hours, and I believe, April, you were going to talk about that?
Sure. As we talked about a couple of weeks ago, that we would like to move enforcement up to 9:00 o'clock starting June 1st, but I'm actually going to ask to modify that to Monday, June 3rd. We don't like to start anything on a Friday. We would keep that in perpetuity until the lights come in. We just got confirmation of our drawings for our prototypes for the lighting and hope to- We don't like to start anything on a Friday. We would keep that in perpetuity until the lights come in. We just got confirmation of our drawings for our prototypes for the lighting, and hope to bring the final request to council on May 28. So we would see this probably going for all of June and probably most of July before we get them in. So we think that by June 3, it will be more than light enough at 9 o'clock to start, or changing that time from 8 to 9 p.m.
All right. Questions?
Again, I would like to readjust that. I think it says June 1. I'd like to make that June 3, which is a Monday.
June 3. So noted. Is there a motion?
I'll move to we approve temporary parking enforcement hours to be from 10 a.m. to 9 p.m. Monday through Saturday until June 3 in 2013.
Support. Moved by Martin, supported by Lennon. Any discussion on that item? Pretty straightforward. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Who seconded that, Your Honor?
That was moved by Martin and supported by Lennon.
Thank you. Councilmembers Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Second item is a consideration of the Ferndale Police Officers Association contract. Jenny, are you going to introduce that item? All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are very excited to announce the ratification of both the Patrol and the Command contracts for the Ferndale Police Department. As you know, last year, when we came before you, we requested and they approved also a one-year extension on their contract, and we talked about going forward in a different manner with our collective bargaining. And we did just that this time. We really utilized an interest-based approach to this contract negotiations, and were able to settle those contracts very quickly with a fairly minimal cost to the city. We've talked a great deal about how we're going to take care of our employees going forward with the limited staffing that we have, and so we have made some adjustments within that contract to allow for that. In addition to that, we have received concessions back from the unions, both Patrol and Command, to help offset some of those costs. At this time, we're not recommending any changes to the health care plan. That health care plan currently falls within the hard cap guidelines, and that the plan that we currently have in place for most all of our active staff is actually a consistent plan within this area that many of our neighboring communities use as well. So with that, we.
Nothing, other than to thank both Jenny and the two unions that worked very well and quickly and efficiently to resolve this kind of, both contracts.
And I would also like to specifically acknowledge both the Patrol and the Command Union in their very, very quick cooperation with the interest-based bargaining approach. We had, actually, I would even categorize it as a fun experience to some degree, which was really nice. So we definitely appreciate all of their cooperation in the process.
Thanks. Questions of council?
I move to authorize the attached changes to the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Ferndale and Ferndale Police Officers Association for the period July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2017.
Support. Moved by Piana, supported by Martin. Discussion on this item?
I'd just like to thank Jenny for expediting this so quickly, and Chief, and all the staff involved. It was remarkable.
I mean, historically, these contracts have dragged on for a long, long time, so.
I also.
Great job to wrap it up.
I also wanted to say, I'm really excited that interest-based bargaining is working out for the city. I'm really pleased that I was able to bring that concept to the city over a year ago, and that we went down that path for it, and it has resulted in significant cost savings, building morale, and I think overall good benefit for everybody involved.
You know, I think we were all really skeptical of it when Melanie brought it, all of our attention, but it really could not have worked out.
Very candid of you there, Scott.
It could not have worked out better, and so, thanks, Melanie.
Melanie, I mean, maybe not everyone understands what interest-based bargaining is. Do you have a short sort of explanation of what we're doing differently this year with certain units like this?
Well, I think traditionally, cities, city departments have bargained with unions as a, this is what we want, and you better work with us to get it, rather than really truly understanding what the unions want and what their interests are. And by going down that path of exploring that versus coming at it as a, I've already dug my heels in the sand, and this is exactly what we want, there's really no place to actually start bargaining from when you come into the conversation like that. And interest-based bargaining is a different, more laying your cards out on the table first and being open and transparent and saying that this is what we need to achieve, how do you want to, how can you help us get there? And it was brought to my attention through the work of the Michigan Suburbs Alliance and the School of Labor and Management at Michigan State of Universe, Michigan State University, I'm confusing all the universities now. So I think it was very beneficial to the community.
I would agree. Other comments? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. So moving on to this, as you mentioned, we got contracts with both the Patrol Officers and the Command, so the second one would be the Command, right?
Yep. And as you'll notice, they're pretty consistent for the most part, with the one outlining difference being, if you recall back last year, we had agreed with the Patrol Union to address that 2% differential between Patrol and Command, and so the Command contract is absent that piece. And so what you have before you is fairly consistent to what is in Patrol.
Thank you. Is there a motion for this one?
I'd move to authorize the change, changes to the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Ferndale and the Ferndale Police and Tenants and Sergeants Association for the period of July 1, 2013 to June 30, 2017.
Support. Moved by Lennon, supported by Galloway. Discussion or comments on this item? Very good. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Galloway.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted as well. Thanks, you guys. All right, that brings us to call to council. Chief, do you have any, before you go all the way back to the back of the room, do you have anything else for the good of the city?
I do not, Your Honor. I just wanted to come and say thank you.
No stalling.
Waste a little bit more time.
A long way to go.
Jenny, anything else from HR this evening? All right. Derek, anything from Community and Economic Development? Nothing. Christina, anything else from the DDA? All right, I'm looking around. Lloyd, anything else from BPW? Joe, anything from? No. All right, then. Huh? Yeah, well. I was, no, I'm saving the best for last. Chief Sullivan?
Your Honor and Council, I'd just like to say, we attended Brian Wolke out of Wayne Westland's funeral today, with over, almost a couple thousand in response from all over the United States and Canada as well. And there's quite a few fire trucks there, and it was a really sombering event, because it was amazing to keep that many people quiet for that long in regards to the family that lost a firefighter, so.
Chief, I was out on Ford Road, saw the procession. Happened to be out in the area. That was quite impressive.
It was, it was quite an event, and I'm proud to say that's when firefighters are at their best, and it was really a long event. And Ford Road was blocked because they had an active shooter inside the Westland City Hall, so that kind of screwed traffic up a bit also, but it was quite a day in Westland. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Cheryl Lynn, anything from the Clerk's office?
Deadline for nominating petitions for the library board seats are due by 4:00 p.m. tomorrow. The City Clerk's office.
Very good. April, anything else for the City Man?
Just a couple of things. One is that I forwarded today the updated communications plan regarding the West Nine Mile project. If you have any questions, please let me know, and we can go forward with that. And then we wanted to ensure that at each council meeting that there is an update publicly, and so we thought we would do it during announcements, because most people do watch at least the beginning portion, but if, as we move forward, if you prefer that a different part of the agenda, just let us know. But until then, they'll come up during the announcement period to have the opportunity. You can ask questions at that time of where we're at with that. So again, as we go through that process, you can just let us know if you'd like that somewhere else, and that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Dan, anything from the City Attorney's office?
Very briefly, council will recall that several years ago, it passed a resolution requiring project labor agreements for any type of construction project. The Michigan Legislature then passed a statute which precluded that for governmental entities. That case was, there was a lawsuit challenging that particular legislation in the United States District Court, Eastern District Division. Judge Roberts struck that law down. It is on appeal to the Sixth Circuit. I hope to have an update, status update at next council meeting on that.
Very good.
As to the status of the appeal.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Martin?
Just two things. I want to thank everyone, Matt Nowaczek in particular, and the Community Foundation, and everyone who showed up to clean Ferndale up Saturday. Over 60 folks that showed up, and the city looks great, and they did just a fantastic job. And then, secondly, to add on to Greg's announcement from earlier, I want to add that the deadline for the applications for the grants is May 31st, so there's three weeks left to get them in. You can also turn those in electronically as well as, at City Hall as well, and the email, and everything's on the website, so.
Excellent. Councilman Lennon?
Just two quick things. I want to thank Jennifer for taking care of that health care issue with that DPW retiree. I appreciate it. Good work. Really put her at ease. And through the chair, to April, can I please get a report on, from your staff on those buildings on West Marshall that I've inquired about, that are dilapidated? And that's it.
Very good. Mayor Protem, Piana?
Yeah, a couple of things. I also wanted to say thanks to everybody who came out to the City of Ferndale, cleaned the Ferndale up. I also want to thank Matt Nowaczek for allowing me to throw a pie in his face. And I have to say, I took great enjoyment out of doing that. I encourage everybody to throw a pie at someone, somebody. A lot of fun. What also is going to be a lot of fun is supporting Ferndale Pride. I'm showing my support by doing the Rainbow Run on the morning of June 1, and according to the Rainbow Run website, registration is 65% full. And I wanted to encourage people who aren't runners to join me, who is not a runner, to come out and walk, jog, slow walk, fast walk, in periods of sprints, of doing that multiple times, over three miles for the 5K. So please register online and join me and lots of others in having fun and getting very colorful on that day.
Excellent. Councilman Galloway?
Nothing for me this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. Nothing for me as well. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.
That's a record.